Okay, we're good.
Good evening. This is Enid Lapelis. Today is March 22nd and the time is 8:01 PM. Please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please allow me to confirm the presence of those Town Council members and any other staff or anticipated participants are present. Members, when I call your name, respond in the affirmative. Dee Dee Martin?
Dee Dee Martin here.
Jan Aguilar? So, I don't, is she on remote?
Jan Aguilar will not be joining this evening. She's.
Okay, thank you. I see Jason Mauer, Terry Rooney.
Terry Rooney here.
Okay, remotely. John Formicella?
John Formicella present.
Tony Scott?
Tony Scott here.
Sean O'Rourke?
Sean O'Rourke here.
And Enid Lapelis here. Any other members? Reading opening statement about the hybrid meeting. This meeting will be conducted as a hybrid meeting as follows. Town council members, designated staff, invited presenters, and members of the press may attend in person or remotely. Public access to this meeting will be limited by joining this meeting as follows. A limited number of in-person public attendees will be permitted based upon the reduced capacity pursuant to the governor's executive orders. Any member of the public wishing to attend in person must email meeting@monroct.org at least 24 hours in advance. You'll be notified as to whether or not space is available. All members of the public may attend remotely as follows via computer, tablet, or smartphone, and via phone with a special number. Please refer to further information provided at the end of this agenda regarding this remote electronic meeting. Okay, we've done that. Looking at the consent calendar, are there any objections to me passing the consent calendar as presented? Comments? So I'm going to present, I'm going to pass the consent calendar as presented. Communications? I hereby ask that communication items A through K be referenced in the meetings of the minute. I'm sorry, minutes of the meeting. Any public participation people?
Please remember to unmute yourself prior to indicating your desire to speak.
Okay, I don't see anybody.
None.
Okay. Going on to appointments. Ms. Martin?
Madam Chairman, Resolution 21-31 resolves that the Monroe Town Council hereby appoint Davina Rodriguez, Democrat, will circle to the Architectural Review Board for a term ending December 5, 2023.
Do I hear a second?
Jason Mauer, second.
Okay, discussion. Mrs. Martin?
Thank you. Ms. Rodriguez is an award-winning marketing professional with over 10 years of experience. In addition, she is co-founder of a website that promotes local entertainment, technology, and family travel. Davina and her husband Eddie moved to Monroe in 2017 and look forward to this opportunity to become more involved in the community. And this appointment fills a vacancy created by the resignation of John Rosen.
Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, we're voting for this person. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we have five here, and we have, Jason is six, and I think that's it. There are three people absent. Am I right?
Two people.
I believe Terry Rooney is here, but I didn't.
Terry, can you vote on Davina Rodriguez? It's fine with you? So, anybody against this? It passes seven to zero.
Madam Chair?
Yep.
With your permission, Ms. Rodriguez is here. Can I swear in?
Sure, of course.
This raises your right hand. Please solemnly swear, or solemnly sincerely affirm, as the case may be, that you will faithfully discharge, according to law, your duties as a member of the Architectural Review Board to the best of your abilities, so help you God, for our bounty party. Congratulations.
Okay, going on to action items. Mr. Rooney has three things to report on, so we'll start with the Police Commission. Mr. Rooney?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just, just kind of a couple of attaboys. The recent meeting that they had in the Police Commission is designing a new way of doing things in regards to the Police Department. They're assigning the commissioners to different goals and objectives, such as one commissioner dealing with the budget of the Police Department, another commissioner dealing with equipment, another police commissioner dealing with personnel matters. So it's a new way of working within the commission and giving new jobs and ideas. It's a new move. So I just, it's just kind of a quick attaboy to Commissioner Nocello and his hard work there. They're getting, they're really progressing in a very nice way. The chief at the last meeting was very appreciative of that move, so that's all I wanted to mention to the council. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions or comments of Mr. Rooney's report? Everybody? Seeing no one. I'm going on to planning and zoning. Mr. Rooney had a report on that.
Yeah, just once again, same type of thing. Unfortunately, with Bill Porter's passing, Mike O'Reilly was appointed to the commission. Since he has been appointed, there's been a lot of progress there. They've done a really good job in creating new projects in town that will build the grand list. I think the actual number, I think there's been seven projects approved in town in the last two months. I don't know all the details of all of them. I've seen some of the projects, but, you know, it's a good improvement in the town to increase the tax base. As you know, going into a budget season, that's very difficult. Actually, not going into a budget, it's completed, but it's difficult to send the taxpayers a message that they're, they're going to pay any time at all. My apologies to my dog. It's a good thing in the town that there's some nice new developments going through, and I just wanted to say that, you know, it's very much appreciated the hard work that they're doing.
Okay. Any questions or comments to this report? Okay, and before I do legislative and administrative, I might as well let Mr. Rooney do EMS Building Committee.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. With EMS, I think I left the council knowing that we had gone through, you know, 97 bids, or 98 bids for the EMS building in this current market. It was a good idea to do that with the competitive bidding. It looks like we're going to save the town about $600,000 doing it that way. We do not have a final number on the building. We are now in talks with Burlington Construction. They're doing something, I don't know if people on this board are familiar with it, but it's called value engineering. The value engineering is very simply similar products for a cheaper price. We're in a, we're in, anybody that's in construction understands that we're in a situation where goods are anywhere from 25% to 50% higher than pre-COVID rates. So this number that's, looks like it's starting to evolve, is really impressive under the conditions. So just wanted to share with you guys that obviously, at this point, we don't have a final number. We're waiting on the value engineering to come through. We're anticipating to save even a little bit more money. But it looks like, at this point, the total savings is going to be, you know, somewhere around $600,000 less than we expected this building to cost. So I just wanted to bring that to the attention of the council. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody want to discuss that with Mr. Rooney? Any questions, room? Okay, so, so thank you, Mr. Rooney. Going on to legislative and administrative matters. Mr. Formicella?
Thank you, Madam Chair. LNA met this evening before Town Council, and all our resolutions tonight numbered 21-32 to 21-36 were passed down to Town Council with favorable patience.
Also, Mr. Formicella, going on to first electmen's update.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, starting out with our COVID update, the case rates have increased a little bit here and in surrounding towns. We are now, or as of the late last week, rolling two-week average, we're back to around four and a half new cases per day was our average. Again, very similar increases in other Fairfield County towns. The percentage of population receiving at least one dose in town is 27%, which is right around the state rate of 26%. Happy to report that the state is once again providing vaccine for first-dose clinics. We have a full appointment schedule this week on Wednesday at the Senior Center, and on Thursday of this week, the town will start our mobile clinics to do outreach to homebound residents. We will be bringing vaccine to the individual. This is for individuals that have, you know, either medical or physical limitations that preclude them from leaving the house in order to get the vaccine. And I will be sending out more information to the community this week about that program for anyone who we haven't already identified. But we do have several people we've already identified that will be reaching out, that we actually be going out to on Thursday. And then, I'm really happy to announce that starting next week, not this week, but next week, we will be moving our vaccination clinics, the town vaccination clinics, to the St. Jude School Gymnasium. I'm very, very grateful that the parish has agreed to do this and provide the space as a community service. This will provide us with greatly simplified logistics in terms of clinic setup, and just the sheer proximity alone makes things simpler as well. It also is going to allow us to schedule more appointments each week, which we want to be able to have the capacity to do because we are, we keep being told that more vaccine will become available as time goes on. And although there are increasing providers out there giving vaccine, we want to maximize what we can do locally. So this will allow us to be able to do more vaccinations per week. And the other thing is it will not interfere with other programming or services. I want to, if we have this space available, it'll allow the Senior Center to conduct their normal programming. That right now, even though it has been limited, you know, we want to be able to not tie up that center for two days a week. And although schools are also available, we have used Mastic in the past, but I'm very sensitive to the desire by the superintendent to want to have school in session and not interfere with school activities. And although we know it's available if we need it, having this other option is just a extremely, extremely good thing for us. And again, I'm very appreciative of the parish for allowing us to do that and doing it as a community service. As far as town operations, we have, in concert with the state's new phase, we have opened Town Hall, the library in the Senior Center, back to walk-in service. So, as you all know, has been open by appointment only. We are continuing to take appointments. We encourage appointments. We will keep the Dropbox for now. We will continue to have our Library to Go curbside service, but we are basically have unlocked the doors and removed the temporary doorbells and are trying to get to the next step towards, towards normalcy. But that is that piece. I think that was it for COVID. Wanted an update from Chief Salvatore in the Police Department. In light of some recent events, you know, it's important that transparency is important on regards to our Police Department's practices. Chief Salvatore has posted the departmental general orders on the town's website, and those standard operating procedures can be found. I provided a link for you there, but those who may not have this document in front of them, it's monroct.org/general-orders. And I thank the chief. I know he worked with the Police Commission on this, and appreciate him putting him out there. And economic development updates, a few updates I wanted to give. The Panera Bread situation that was on hold for a while is, appears to be going in a favorable direction. The developer for this center has moved forward last week with one application for a new, it's a new design, it's a new concept called Panera Cafe. It is, it is a, it's a really nice-looking restaurant, if you ask me. It's a pretty good update on their Panera Bread, but it's, it's the, would be the second Panera Cafe in the country. Their first one is going in St. Louis. It went before the Architectural Review Board last week and received a favorable review, and now we are simply awaiting for them to submit an application to the Planning and Zoning Commission for the revisions, and we're told that those are forthcoming. So happy to see that that may be back. Another establishment called Your CBD Store has opened up at 574 Monroe Turnpike, behind the 574 Wines location. There's a separate entrance on the side, if you aren't familiar with that, that kind of back entrance. The store is one of over 100 locations throughout the country that they have that offers CBD oil-based products. And last, a more of a general update, the outdoor dining that we've all been doing under a combination of my emergency orders and the governor's emergency orders relative to relaxing rules regarding outdoor dining. The team here, the economic development team has been working with the town planner and the subcommittee that deals with regulations of the Planning and Zoning Department, and we, they have drafted some revisions to the zoning regulations that would really help these struggling businesses, and it would allow them to provide permanent outdoor dining. And the whole point of the regulation change is to make the process administrative, so that it would be possible to get a staff-level approval on a minor site revision. Less restrictive, but still ensuring that standards such as safety are maintained and that the commission is aware of those changes. So this will be going to a public hearing on April 22nd before the commission. And last, but certainly not least, is just an update on the American Rescue Plan, which I guess I probably could have covered under, could have put it up with COVID as well. I'm sure you're all aware that there's significant federal funding that is coming down to states and localities under this federal legislation. There are specific prohibitions where it cannot be used for what they are calling tax cuts, but I'm still hopeful that we will be able to find ways to make, you know, acceptable use of the funds and make budgetary adjustments that could help our residents. At this point, the only thing that we've been given is some guidance documents, literally less than a page long, that are very broad, which is probably a good thing. However, we are told that there will be more granular specifics coming from the U.S. Treasury, and those will be the rules that we'll have to abide by in terms of how the funds can be used. The funds will be released in two, two tranches. One, hopefully within 90 days of when this, from 90 days from when the Act was finalized, and then another year later. The funds have to be used by the end of 2024. At this point, we do not have exact numbers, but we do have, we've been given what are called informed estimates, and those include, there's, there's three basic buckets of funding that we're talking about in this act. One is direct municipal aid, and for Monroe, that is coming out to about $1.9 million. There's a second bucket, which is county aid, and one of the things that this legislation includes is for states such as Connecticut that do not have kind of operational county government. The provision requires that those funds be distributed directly to municipalities on a per-capita basis. So that amounts to $3.7 million in terms of the informed estimate. And let me, I'm sorry, I don't mean to backtrack, but the first bucket I gave, the 1.9, that is based upon a formula which we do not have, but it is based on population, a variety of indices, social factors, this whole, whole variety of things. So in those numbers, you'll see significant dollars going to cities and things like that that have different social kind of vulnerability indices. And then the last bucket is about $1 million that would go directly to the Monroe Public School District. Again, we don't have a lot of specifics right now. I did inform the Board of Finance of this as well at their meeting. Certainly, if we have sufficient information where the Board of Finance can address any of these things, we will. I have been clear in meeting, we've, we've had, there's been several meetings with CCM and some of our U.S. Congressmen. I had the pleasure of having a call with MetroCog and Congressman Himes, and I, you know, really emphasized with him the concern that I and some of my colleagues from other towns shared was that, you know, appreciating that we are in the middle of budget season, and it's really important that we know with that specificity that will only come from the U.S. Treasury, that anything that they could do to get the U.S. Treasury to release that guidance sooner than later is most appreciative because we're all, all the towns are under a clock that's ticking relative to getting budgets approved. So, so that's what I got in regards to that. Actually, that's it. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Yes, of course. Questions, Mr. Mauer?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Thank you, First Electman Kellogg. You actually answered two of the three questions that I had prepared tonight, one being on Panera and one being on outdoor dining. I do have one other question, but before I get to that, you said the public meeting for the outdoor dining issue is currently scheduled for April 22nd?
I believe that was the date that was provided. Let me just, that should be the correct date. That is a night of planning and zoning meeting, and that would make sense. I believe their meeting started at 7:00. Hold on, let me double check. Yeah, their meetings normally start at 7:00. So unless something, unless they were to change, it would be at 7:00.
Perfect. And then I did have one other question that constituent brought to me regarding budgetary redirection of funds, that we had discussed how some of the money that might be allocated to the playground as, as of right now in the budget, proposed budget, comes from things such as the Splash Pad project or other projects. And they were wondering if there's a way to get a list of other projects that had funds originally allocated and directed towards those projects that have since been allocated to new projects or different projects. And the amount of that, obviously, that is not information that you can have available at a moment's notice, but if that's something that you might be able to put together, that was something that I was asked to provide, and I said I would ask for.
Sure, sure. Is the question specifically related to parks and recreation projects? Because as you know, there's.
It seemed to be that the, the communication I got said such as trails, amphitheater, fields, things along those lines. So it seemed to be mostly directed towards parks and recreation.
Okay, sure. I mean, there's, yeah, I'd be happy to get an overview of the various parks and rec projects that are out there, and, yeah, I don't think there's a tremendous amount of funds that have been reallocated. There's certainly a lot of funds that are, have already been.
Still allocated.
Yes, correct, assigned and still in place, right. But, okay.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions of the selectmen? The Formicella?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to thank the First Electman, as well as our Health Director, Nancy Brol, for instituting the mobile clinics for homebound residents with the clinic. I think this is critically important in our time where the most vulnerable parts of our population may not be able to get the vaccine, and this is a great way to get everybody vaccinated and healthy and safe and ready to get back to normal.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks.
We have no unfinished business tonight, so we're going on to new business. Resolution A 21-34, to consider and act upon the resolution regarding a small-town economic assistance program, STEAP, S-T-E-A-P, GRO, O'Rourke.
Adoption of the following resolution, Resolution Number 21-34. Whereas pursuant to Connecticut State Statute of Section 4-66G, the Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection is authorized to extend the financial assistance for public safety projects. And whereas it is desirable and in the public interest that the town of Monroe make the application to the state for $128,205 to undertake the public safety communications project and to execute an assistance agreement. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Monroe Town Council, one, that it is cognizant of the conditions and prerequisites for the state assistance imposed by EGS Section 4-66G, two, that the filing of the application by the town of Monroe in an amount not to exceed $128,205 is hereby approved, and that the First Electman is hereby authorized and directed to execute and file such application with the Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection to provide such additional information to execute other documents as may be required, to execute, execute an assistance agreement with the state of Connecticut for the state financial assistance if such an agreement is offered, to execute any amendments, revisions, revisions thereto, and to act as the authorized representative of the town of Monroe.
Thank you, Mr. O'Rourke. Do I hear a second to this motion?
John Formicella, second.
Okay, discussion. Mr. Kellogg?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, as you'll recall, some time ago, I reported to the council that the state had reinstituted the STEAP grant program. Unlike prior years, it was limited to $128,205. I, I put together with assistance of a, from a team here, put together a proposal, which I think I reported back to some time ago. We received a notice of award in that process. We are now in the process of submitting the remaining paperwork that they need to complete our application that they require prior to releasing an MOU. And one of the items in that is they need a certified resolution to which they provided the attached language that they would require. So I ask that you approve this resolution, and then subsequently, I would anticipate receiving a final MOU, which I will bring back for council's consideration as well.
Any other discussion? Questions? Otherwise, we're voting on this resolution. All in favor?
Aye.
So I see, I see six, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, and of course, Terry would be seven?
Correct.
So it's a seven to zero. The ayes have it. Okay, going on to the next resolution, Resolution 21-35, to consider and act upon a resolution regarding revisions to building official job description. Mr. O'Rourke?
I move the adoption of the following resolution, Resolution Number 21-35, resolve that the Town Council hereby approves the proposed revisions to the assisted, assistant building official job description and authorize the First Electman to implement as soon as practical on or after April 5th, 2021.
Do I hear a second?
John Formicella, second.
Okay, discussion. Mr. Kellogg?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So you're all aware that in my proposed budget for the next fiscal year, it includes the changes to the building official from part-time to full-time status. You're all aware of the rationale behind that, as I know that you included that change in your proposed budget to the Board of Finance. Subsequently, our current assistant building official has submitted his resignation. So I think for obvious reasons, it would be much more practical to recruit for a full-time position now versus attempting to find someone who would work part-time for three months and then have to address it transitioning to full-time in July. Additionally, with the workload that's going on there, implementing this sooner than later would also have an immediate impact in the workload currently being addressed by the building department. It would improve customer service. As I mentioned in my memo, there is sufficient funding available in the HR insurance line that could cover the incremental costs for the building department salary for those incremental three months. I did present this to the Board of Finance at their meeting last week, and they did. at their meeting last week, and they did approve a budget transfer to cover those costs. So, the job description before you primarily is to change the position from 24 hours a week to 35, making it full-time. There are other changes, as you can, as you can see, based on the redline version as well, which really, a lot of it is kind of housekeeping and improvements based upon the input of our new HR director and the new building official who wanted to simply clarify and emphasize certain things. But again, I think the only real substantive change here is the status change from part-time to full-time.
Any other discussion? Anybody? So, we're voting on this resolution?
I just, I'm sorry, Mrs. Norton. Clarify, did you, Mr. Selectman, did you say that the Board of Finance did approve the transfer?
Yes, they did.
They did, okay.
Okay, any other discussion? Resolution, all in favor? 2, 3, 4, 5.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, so we have seven to zero. Thank you. This resolution passes. Going on to 36, 21-36, to consider and act upon a resolution regarding Connecticut Food Bank perishable items program agreement. Mr. GROK?
The adoption of the following resolution, Resolution Number 21-36, resolve that Connecticut Kellogg, First Electman of the town of Monroe, is authorized and execute and deliver on the behalf of the town of Monroe the perishable items partner program agreement and associated documents by and between the Connecticut Food Bank for perishable donations for the food pantry.
Thank you. Do I hear a second to the motion?
Madam Formacalla, second.
Okay, discussion. Mr. Kellogg?
So, the, our food pantry has a relationship with Connecticut Food Bank, and one of the programs we participated is this perishable items partner program, and where we pick up donations from the retail establishments that are listed in the, in the agreement. They have asked that we attack, that we execute this agreement to be able to continue the program, and ask that you move this forward.
Okay, other discussion? Going on to vote on this resolution. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, it passes seven to zero. Any second public participation? Anybody see anybody? Okay, so I'm closing public participation. Motion to adjourn. I'll make the motion to adjourn. A second? Any second for this? I don't think so. Okay, second. So, adjourn this meeting at 8:34 PM.